To call to order the November 2019 meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. Please join me in a moment of quiet reflection or prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings of this life, including our ability to meet here tonight in freedom. Guide us in our thoughts and deliberations that we may make the best decisions for current and future residents of Morrisville. We also ask for your comfort and protection for those throughout the world who are working for peace. Protect those in danger and comfort those who are suffering. And we particularly think of our first responders. We ask these things in your name. We have a full board plus an alternate this evening. So Chris, you'll be joining in the conversations and so on, but I'm not able to make a motion. Item four in our -- excuse me. Item three is, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay. We're okay with that. We'll move forward. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes from October? If so, I entertain a motion to recommend approval.
Move to recommend approval.
Thank you, Kenneth. I have a second.
Second?
Motion to approve. And second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. I think we jump straight ahead to item six, which is a general topic. Anybody in the public who wishes to make any comment? It's unusual that we see that, so we'll carry on with item number nine. This specific item does have the opportunity for public comment, but Michelle, if you could introduce it, that would be great.
So there's two microphones. Do we need to speak into any certain one, both?
The cooch neck one is probably preferred.
So the other one, even though the green light is -- okay. I wasn't here last week.
Always updating the media. Well, thank you Chairman Pritchard. As the board may recall, at your October meeting, former Director Tanner presented a variety of proposed UDO amendments at a work session. We're back tonight with a public comment session to further discuss those amendments. As just a reminder, the main purpose of the amendments had to do with the Main Street zoning district, updating some things with that zoning district to align better for the vision for the town center, particularly some of the streetscape items that had previously been discussed with town council, with lighting, brick banding on sidewalks and other things. Also, the creation of a new Main Street Plan Development District that could be applied to that area eventually. And then taking the opportunity to also bring forward to you some items to clean up some sections of the code and further clarify some things. Since your last meeting in October, we have gone back and taken kind of a closer look at some of those amendments. We have tweaked a few things and added a couple additional cleanup items. We have also incorporated a few things from some general statute updates that occurred over the summer, so we could align better with that. I don't want to go over everything that Director Tanner had reviewed with you, but I do want to touch base on those things that have changed since you last saw the proposed amendments. So I'm going to go through those with you, and then if you have any questions about any of the changes or any of the original items, obviously staff is here for questions. Section 2.4.4 of the UDO talks about kind of the review process that an application goes through. There is currently a 60-day resubmit deadline in the code. With some of those general statute changes that occurred over the summer, an applicant now has up to six months to resubmit. If they don't resubmit in six months, their application is considered withdrawn. And we've just played with some of that original language a little bit to kind of simplify it. The Alternative Equivalent Compliance section of the code, really just adding in the common open space and recreational area section as an area that someone could apply for that Alternative Equivalent Compliance, or AEC. That links back to some of the design stuff in the Main Street district, which says it's proposed that you could do that for some open space items. And I think that was just something that was missed to make sure that it was incorporated then in this section as well. Jumping forward to tree protection, you may or may not be aware, but if you remove trees in the town, either under an exemption or without an exemption, there are some restrictions that go along with that in terms of holds on development applications that could then be submitted to the town. So rezoning applications, special use applications, subdivision applications, site plan applications, there's a list of them there. If you remove trees, there's a period that you then have to wait to submit an application. For the rezoning, staff is proposing to make an exception for rezoning applications submitted by the town. This really comes from the land use plan update that's in progress. We do have some properties with a forestry hold on them. We know after we finish the land use plan update that we'll likely be looking at a townwide rezoning and would like to just be able to do everything at once instead of having to come back to these other areas and leave them with their current zoning. Transportation impact analysis section, just a little bit of clarification here to really match up with what we are currently doing today. Did want to point out with this one that in the draft that you received in your packets, we crossed out the wrong existing. So this does have the correct wording here as opposed to what you do have in your draft, but this really just lines up and clarifies what we have been doing. Moving on to cross access, we did or are proposing some additional amendments to this section. One and two is really just starting to list what the current standards are for a planning director waiver. So this is a section of the code where the planning director has some discretion to waive the requirement for cross access. We're proposing the same thing for vehicular cross access, bicycle cross access, and pedestrian cross access, because those waiver standards are all now universal. I can't say that this is a section of the code that the development community probably has one of the highest levels of frustration about, and it is something that we feel at the staff level needs to be adjusted to. So I would not be surprised if later on we come back with additional amendments to this section. But for the time being, trying to keep this kind of in the clarification cleanup realm, really just proposing to add number three and four there, which is that the cross access would not be required if you're connecting to a cemetery or an adjoining property owned by a government or public utility to which vehicular access is restricted, or giving the director the authority to grant a waiver if it would require someone to cross through preserved land, tree save area, or conservation easement. In those cases, you're basically requiring a stub to nowhere. With some of the walkway design standards, this was in the original draft that you received last month, really just tweaked it a little bit. Originally, there was a prohibition on mulch, but after talking a little bit more with stormwater and parks and rec, there are some instances where we do use mulch on walkways around some of our stormwater facilities or on other trails throughout town. So this would continue to require a hard surface or boardwalk for all greenways, hard surface for all sidewalks, but just gives a little bit of flexibility if there's a need to do something else somewhere. And it does then also require the brick banding in the Main Street district, and that was presented to you last time. The non-residential design guidelines, we have a couple of changes proposed here. One is to footnote number nine, which deals with facade materials on recreational buildings that are over 40,000 square feet in size. When weight competition had come forward originally, some amendments were made to the code to deal with that unique facility, and both sides, I think, thought that we really were at 50%. I think that there was some misunderstanding there, so going back to clarify that that really was the intent. And then on the fenestration requirements, there's been discussion if those requirements are for area or length, so clarifying that as well. And then with the screening section of the code, you may recall from last month, we are proposing some different screening standards for ground-mounted mechanical equipment, so HVAC units, transformers, and other things. Right now, you do need to put a wall around any mechanical equipment anywhere on the property, which has caused some issues with some applicants. If it is a Duke power facility, oftentimes they do restrict anything in close proximity to that unit and will require as much as a 10-foot separation between the unit and the structure. You could imagine sometimes we have these things out close to the road, and then you're just putting a much larger box around a smaller box. So the amendments that aren't shown on the screen still require the wall if you're within five feet of the building, but if you're further away, you could screen that with landscaping. And then also adding to the deviation standards and planning director discretion to allow different screening if we are conflicting with the utility company's policy. As some of you know, we have been working on a sign code update for some time, and that is actually, that draft is actually about 90% complete. So we do hope to have that to you sometime in early 2020. But wanted to take this opportunity to get a couple things cleaned up that are causing issues currently. One is an added exemption for signs displaying government speech. This was, this is in the draft sign code right now that we plan to present to you, but really affects some of our plans for wayfinding signage. Moving forward with the updated sign code, your historic markers, your public notice signs, all of that stuff would fall into that category as well. And then in our industrial management zoning district, we currently only allow one sign per building. And we do have a number of single-story buildings where we have some large tenants, some of them taking up up to 40,000 square feet, who are then limited to an awning sign, a projecting sign, or window signage. So at least on those one-story buildings, looking to allow each tenant to have one sign, we'll probably be wanting to talk to you further with a sign code update about what to do with the multi-story buildings, because if you have 15 tenants in a building all on different levels, then that could start to get a little cluttered. But for the single-story buildings, they're very much like your retail buildings, your shopping centers, and we have a number of them out there really just relying on window signage right now. And then last are some definition changes. So the first three there, building, dwelling, and dwelling unit, those are prompted by the general statute update. If we do have definitions in our code for those items, they now do have to match state statute. So that just allows us to come in line with those general statute updates so that all communities statewide are working off of universal language for those definitions. And then for place of worship, also as kind of an accessory use, allowing up to two faith leaders to live within those buildings. So those are the things that have changed since the last meeting. Just as a reminder, there are two items that we're asking for your consideration of. The first is a resolution adopting a consistency statement and then an ordinance acting on the text amendments themselves. So with that, I will entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Michelle. Can I take you to the one about trees and forests, which is page 5.5? 5.3.2, I think.
Yes.
So can you just help me understand, supposing an area has not been developed, there is no plan to develop it, there's no request for zoning. Somebody could clear cut that and then move ahead and rezone it.
Yes. Right now, you can, if it's permitted, timbering is permitted in most areas. So you get approval of a forestry plan, and you can timber. That's one of the exemptions in the code. But if you do timber, even under that exemption, it's three years before you could come in for any development application. If you timber or remove trees and don't fall under any exemptions, there's a five-year hold.
And the typical exemptions would be?
The forestry plan is the one that we see most of, where people are using it agriculturally to timber. There are some other exemptions that, gosh, if there's on safe trees, dead damaged trees, those could just go ahead and be removed. So it's really the timbering that's the one that we've seen.
And that's the most likely as the town gets developed. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Michelle?
Just continuing on the forestry thing, you said something about, perhaps I didn't catch what you were trying to say, is if a builder, or the ones that currently have a forestry hold, could you re-explain that statement that you made, that if there is an existing hold, would that continue to be on hold even if they come for rezoning application? Or what were, maybe I didn't catch up and understand that piece of what you were trying to say.
Yeah. Right now, if there's a hold on the property, it's, and what we typically see is timbering plans. And then once that plan is approved, three years from that date before you could submit an application, a private party could submit an application for any type of development or rezoning. What staff is proposing is to allow the town to submit a rezoning application on those properties, even if there is a hold on the property. That way, after the land use plan update, if we want to come through with a townwide rezoning, we can do that and initiate that application and include those properties that do currently have holds on them, some of which are along our New McCrimmon Parkway. So that is currently zoned IM. We're anticipating there'll be a different recommendation with the land use plan update.
So rezoning does not automatically mean development, right? So what I'm trying to get to is--
Yes.
Just because we rezone something to be in a different zone, the hold still exists or hold will continue to exist for the three-year or five-year periods that have been listed out?
Yes. It would just be for the rezoning, all those other types of applications would still not be able to submit, although if the town has come through and done the rezoning, that property owner is a little ahead of the game, because now they don't have to wait for that.
So is that verbatim somewhere clearly spelled out? Because I don't think I read that anywhere in the--
Let me go back to that section. So we just put, with the exception of an application submitted by the town, after the rezoning application only.
Michelle, what's the purpose of the hold?
It's, I wasn't here when the UDO was updated, but it's my understanding that there was considerable discussion about trees and the value that they add to the community. And so wanting to preserve those was a high priority. So the flip side of that was, okay, you can remove them, but if you do, you know, there is a consequence to that. And then hopefully some vegetation can be reestablished during that time period as well.
Also too, so that somebody wouldn't just clear cut the land and then, oh, well, we have a wide open thing and maybe do something, they wouldn't necessarily pass muster through the process otherwise. Like we have a forest there, it might be looked at differently than if you've got a clear cut piece of land. So that kind of ties them together, I think was part of it.
But as I reread this one more time, maybe just the way it is written, it's not clear to me that if the town submitted the exception, the hold will continue.
We can play with that wording a little bit more if you feel that it needs clarified.
The statement in that, with the exception, right?
Mm-hmm.
Then that kind of implies almost as if, if the town submitted that application, somehow the whole, that particular entire section is no longer valid.
Okay.
At least that's how I interpreted it now.
Okay. Yeah, if the board feels that that needs clarified, we could absolutely play with that language a little bit more.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that was actually kind of the one thing I had thought about as well, just in case somebody might get the idea that sort of reset the clock for them.
Do we do that offline? Yeah. Any other questions for Michelle? So we do have an opportunity, I think, for a public comment session.
Yes.
If anybody would like to comment on this topic, now is the time. I think we can safely close the public comment session. So we have, in connection with this item, there are two potential motions. One is, of course, to recommend approval of the text amendment. The other is to recommend adoption of a plan consistency review statement. I think we were given some cheat sheets which might be very helpful.
It's not one versus the other, we have to do both.
Both, yes. Now, in my mind, one would have to do, recommend approval of the text amendment before you would make the consistency statement.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
Would we need, I mean, if you're going to review that particular clause of this, do we need to make any mention of that in this consistency statement?
With the, I didn't catch all that with the tree protection section?
Right. I mean, if you're going to review that, do we need to say anything about that in this consistency statement?
Yes. I would suggest including that in a motion if that's something you want us to look at and further clarify. Also, there was an error in what you received on the TIA section. We just struck out the wrong part, so you might also want to indicate that that section would be as presented at tonight's meeting.
So we could say something along the lines of, I mean, I guess where we'd say, you know, probably after the first paragraph, maybe based upon items presented at this meeting for the tree protection and the TIA. I mean, would that be--
That would be fine.
Efficient, you think?
I think the consistency statement is still valid, because in the consistency statement, you're talking about the proposed text amendment. And our proposed text amendment would probably include those tweaks.
Yeah.
I mean, as long as that's, you know, legal, makes it easier, I think. So we need to consider the motion incorporating the changes that were discussed this evening.
I'll do that. I mean, if no one else wants to read it, I'll read it. Okay. So as required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby move to recommend approval of Resolution 2019-141-0 of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a plan consistency review statement for text amendments to Unified Development Ordinance, AMN 19-02, including the comments from the tree protection and the TIA discussed in the meeting tonight, based on the following. The proposed UDO text amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan and are in the public interest because the proposed amendments support the following policies in the town's adopted land use plan. Policy 1A promote growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable, and unique community in the Triangle Region. Policy 2A promote development that fosters a sense of place by improving the character of the built environment, including visually appealing buildings, streetscapes, amenities, and public spaces, as well as the following goals and objectives in the town's strategic plan. Goal 2, thriving, livable neighborhoods, enrich the quality of life through the preservation of natural resources, well-planned development, and strengthen neighborhood vitality. And objective 6.2, economic prosperity, support new and existing businesses by streamlining processes and minimizing complexities. As a result, these text amendments are consistent with the town of Morrisville's adopted plans and are reasonable in the public interest because they further the stated public interest of the town.
Thank you, Lee. Do I have a second for that motion?
I second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
I'll keep rolling. I hereby move, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I hereby move to approve ordinance 2018-247-0A of the Morrisville Town Council approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, AMN 19-02.
I second.
Second.
So those include the changes that were discussed this evening?
Yes, and I would include the changes discussed this evening.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to item 10. Sorry, item 9B. Right.
I'm Brad West of the Morrisville Planning Department, and tonight we're going to talk about the Wake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. To give you a little background on what this actually is, in 1988, Congress passed the Robert T. Stafford Act, which allowed FEMA to designate funds in the wake of presidential declared disaster, and that was for hazard mitigation activities. So let's say a hurricane blew through an area, FEMA was authorized to release funds to that affected area. In 2000, the Disaster Mitigation Act was passed, which said, that's fine, however, each of these communities to be eligible for this funding needs to have a hazard mitigation plan in place. And that was enacted in the year 2000. And so each jurisdiction in the United States is required to have some form of hazard mitigation plan that meets FEMA's overall requirements. And so the town of Morrisville, for a long time, or not that long, but for a while, had its own unique hazard mitigation plan. And in 2015, FEMA was gracious enough to give us, or Wake County, a grant that allowed all the-- all the municipalities in Wake County, all 12 of them, to do a sort of comprehensive, multi-jurisdictional plan that covered all of our municipalities. And that was very beneficial for FEMA because they didn't have to sit there and review 12 different plans. It was beneficial for us because everything was consistent, and a lot of the hazards that affect Mooresville affect our neighbors, so it made sense. And so, in that 2015 plan that some of you may remember from, you know, almost five years ago, we had some implementation items in that plan. Happy to say that we covered most of those implementation items. I won't go through every single one of these, but basically what they have to do is, or what they focus on is our resiliency as a town and how to deal with certain hazards. A lot of these things include, you know, making sure our, our emergency service equipment is backed up with generators, that are, we have a crew available to remove debris, and salt roads, and, you know, before a winter storm arrives, things like that. So kind of common sense policies that we try to carry out in that plan, or implement in that plan. We have a couple unchecked because of either state regulations or just there wasn't a need to fulfill it. One was purchasing property in our floodplain areas. We don't have a lot of vulnerable properties with residents living there in our floodplains, so that wasn't a huge priority, although we have purchased property in the floodplain area for other reasons. An example would be the Go Triangle site near here, the intersection of Town Hall Drive and Mooresville Carpenter Road, where we purchased a land there for a Greenway extension. And that happened to be half in the floodplain. Another is a riparian buffer requirement. When we wrote the plan, folks in Wake County were looking to go from 50 feet to 100 feet on each side of a stream bank for protection. State legislature came in and said, you can't do that. We're going to stick, leave you guys at 50 feet, and you can't exceed that. So that is why those two boxes are not checked. But, so there's a five-year expiration date on our plans for everybody. And so the state luckily had funding to provide to Wake County for another reboot, upgrade, or I'm sorry, update to the hazard mitigation plan. And that allowed us to work with a consultant, so we worked with Wood Consulting, and that planning process for the update lasted from 2018 to 2019. All 12 municipalities were broken up into two work groups. We had Western Wake Work Group and Eastern Wake Work Group. We were, of course, part of the Western Wake Work Group, and we sat down and did some workshops with the consultants and went through each section and kind of fleshed those out. We also sent out some surveys, both paper and online surveys to the public for their input. We had a hazard mitigation committee made up of certain stakeholders in our community throughout Wake County that sort of took our work, once it was complete, from a staff level and reviewed, sort of similar to what you all do, and made sure that what we were doing made sense. And then, once we had something digestible for the public, we brought that out to actual public meetings. And so the final version of this plan is 577 pages. It's very, it's very long. I wouldn't recommend, you know, kind of going through the whole thing, but I definitely would, would recommend at least skimming through the Mooresville section. So this is the section they really want us to focus on tonight. It lists all the potential hazards in Mooresville and our vulnerability to them, which I'll get into a second. But this is sort of what Wake County and FEMA and the state really want us to kind of focus on to make sure it makes sense for us. So another interesting thing is the plan, since it's county-wide, since it involves 12 different municipalities, as soon as the first municipality in Wake County adopts this plan, it becomes active. So that five-year shot clock starts, let's say your Rollsville adopts it in December, it then starts the clock for five years. Let's see. And so for our Mooresville annex, the section that you all are concerned with, for tonight, we looked at a fairly comprehensive list of hazards and our vulnerability to those hazards. A lot of those are not surprising, you know, we do deal with quite a bit of winter storm-related issues, hurricane-related issues. We have occasional tornadoes. We have some more extreme disasters on there, or hazards on there, that maybe are highly unlikely but could wreak a lot of catastrophic damage, and so we thought it'd be good to address. Some hazards are either super broad in scope and that require a national or state response and are kind of out of purview of the county, or are so unlikely to happen that it just wasn't even discussed, that we left them out of the plan intentionally. So think of something like a flu pandemic, that would be way outside of the county's scope and would require, you know, state and federal resources, and be best served through like an emergency operations plan or some sort of national health plan. This is a summary of the risks that affect, or the hazard risks that affect Mooresville. In red, we have the, I guess, our highest risk hazards, and yellow, the ones that we really aren't considering, are putting much thought into. We don't get a lot of earthquakes or landslide issues here in Mooresville, but of course, like I said before, we do get a lot of hurricane-related issues. We have some flooding around Crabtree Creek. Weirdly enough, we have some wildfire potential with a large forest area near McCrimmon Parkway. And the radiological emergency issue, so we were told, to see the quick background, that, that we have a very low probability that actually the Sharon Harris reactor nearby, kind of near towards Apex, of that melting down ever, and there's a lot of safety measures in that facility to prevent a serious meltdown. However, if it did melt down, it is such a catastrophic event that it, the weighting system pushed it up to the high-risk category. And so, you know, you'd have Western Wake uninhabitable for 10,000 years, and so they thought, well, that's going to shift it up to an extreme. So even though it's very low probability, they considered it still a high-risk hazard event. And so just like the 2015 plan, we do have some refresh on our implementation items. We actually have a lot more than we did from our last plan. I went around bugging each department in our town to really think about what we could do to improve our resiliency in the wake of a hazard. And so I won't, you know, there's several here, but I won't go through every single one of them, but again, they have to do with our resiliency, our ability to adapt in the wake of a disaster, making sure our records are safe, making sure our emergency response folks have the equipment they need to carry out rescues, et cetera, making sure our roads are clear, making sure we're prepared for things, you know, we have community shelters ready to go and easily identified, things like that, so. And we have a system to warn residents in case there is some sort of hazard. And so a lot of those have to do with those kinds of, those major themes. But I am happy to talk about any of these if you, if you'd like.
I like policy number three personally.
Coordinate with due, yeah. So we, yeah.
I was wondering if we could use that one against them when I saw that earlier.
And I should say, a lot of the good news is, a lot of the, since these were drafted a while ago, a lot of these are either underway or almost complete, so we're already making progress even before this potentially gets adopted, so that's good news. That's it for this presentation, but we, I should say, we do have a public comment session associated with this item.
Thank you, Brad.
Yep.
And at this time, invite anybody in the public who wishes to come and speak on this topic, please come forward. And I think we can safely close the public comment session.
That's good.
Any questions or comments for Brad?
I just had one out of curiosity on annex 1.4.1 on your capability assessment table. You were rated moderate for plans, ordinances, codes, and programs. Is that average? Is that okay?
That's average.
Something long-term we should be looking at? Because I think they're excellent here, so I was surprised to see just moderate.
Yeah, and we, we kind of joked about that with the consultants. I mean, it's, it's, I think they're hesitant to give us something more than moderate because there's always more than you can do. It's kind of like that teacher that never gives you an A+ because it's, you're not quite, you could do better. But we do, we, you know, we, I think it's averaged out. I don't, I don't necessarily feel like they looked at every plan in depth, but they kind of averaged out what we cover comprehensively in our comprehensive plan. This is technically part of our comprehensive plan, and, and this, not just the planning departments, what other departments are doing with their emergency operation stuff, and they felt like we, yeah, we're moderate. It sounds like you're just adequate, but it's, it's, it's more than that, hopefully, to answer your question.
I actually had two questions.
Yep.
So, recently through my company, you know, after the, after the floodings that happened, you know, in the east, we actually did a study of preparedness of North Carolina, and how the various organizations coordinate with each other, right? How do they get volunteers, resources, and the entire communication between all of them? And the grading given to North Carolina was something like C, right? So what I'm wondering is, lot of time and energy is wasted in coordinating between different agencies and, and organizations? Getting the volunteers to the right place, with the resources at the right place, and so on and so forth. Did the plans examine that? You know, having individual plans is great, but the most, biggest issue is coordinating between different agencies. How rapidly can we respond? How quickly can we get resources to the, to the place, and so on and so forth?
Yeah, and so, and so that sounds more of like, so I should back up and say, the, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is a very generalized document. It's more of like, these are things you need to consider, and then in our implementation items, you can call out specific plans that would address things like, how do we interact with other agencies and deploy forces for, you know, specific actual hazards? So we have a, one of the policies that I kind of skimmed through at the end, talks about updating our emergency operations plan, which does exactly that. You know, it talks about the coordination with us and like other, you know, Cary and other nearby jurisdictions for, you know, sometimes we have hazards that occurred in Mooresville that need other jurisdictional help, so. So that is something that is talked about.
And just to add to that, I think it's something that's definitely on Manager Page's radar. I think when she goes to different conferences and events around North Carolina, it's definitely a topic of conversation. So although when management is hired, we do need to do some FEMA training, it's required. We just started in on kind of a refresher, taking some of the higher-level courses. So right now, all of town management, I just went to one in October, it's three days, there's another one in November, another one in January. You want your police and your firefighters out in the field, so other people have to step in and fill in the rest of that organizational kind of structure and do some of the logistics stuff in the background. So a lot of that training is about setting up those organizations, learning your roles and responsibilities, and so it is something that Manager Page is focused on and that we're all actively in training for as well.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that also includes, like, part of a mitigation plan is also includes having a database of volunteers to call on, right? Because if National Guards, police, and everybody is out, who is going to come over? Who are you going to call, right? So part of mitigation plans should include creating a repository of people to call on to fill in these gaps, right? And, and how do they address? So perhaps something to look at.
And we, and we do, and another policy I should mention is, we do, and actually have it up on the screen, we do call out utilization of our CERT team, which is our community volunteers that help support emergency services, law enforcement, in case there is some need for that, to fill that gap of coverage, so.
And the second question was more informational purposes? I thought terrorism was number two? The airport falls under Mooresville, right? So is that part of the airport plans to deal with that, and?
The airport does not fall under Mooresville, it's its own jurisdiction, yeah, it's its own entity. However, so this one, and this came up in actually one of the work groups, it's, it's difficult to, and I'm sure everyone would love to know when exactly, you know, when someone's planning a terrorist attack, but we, so I think they felt safe, and a lot of these risk assessments were done on a weighted scale, and so they felt like the moderates scale, with our size of our metropolitan area and our vulnerabilities, moderate is kind of like where they felt comfortable. Definitely didn't want to put it in low risk because we're not, if we're a small town or rural county, that would make more sense, but since we're a large metropolitan area, they felt moderate was appropriate.
Isn't, isn't this a natural hazard?
So, so like, things like radiological are not natural, the hazardous material spill are not natural, I mean, we do have some, terrorism's not natural, some, we do have, so you go back to that list, we do have quite a bit of... Most of these are natural, but some, you know, nuclear meltdown, obviously not natural, terror threat, material spill. Wildfire, wildfires can be caused by humans, but...
I'm surprised the air, a plane crash was not on there.
So plane crash was discussed, it's such...
Who crashed in Mooresville?
Yeah, no, back in the eighties it did, you're right. That was, and I brought that up. And so what their response was, well, that is best handled on a more local emergency operations plan basis because it doesn't affect, it's not a countywide issue. So like, think of a giant winter storm coming through, that's more of a county, let's call upon the county. But you're right, it would definitely affect Mooresville if, and it has in the past, if that occurred in our jurisdiction, you know.
But again, is that a natural hazard, or is that?
A plane crash? Oh, that would be a man-made, or, I mean, I guess a natural hazard could cause a plane to crash, but, you know.
So, so it's not really the purview of this particular report, is it?
Well, it's, so it's such an isolated cra, I mean, it would be an isolated issue that it would be more...
You know, I can think of others, like massive train wreck, a gas explosion, those are not natural hazards.
No.
We're planning here, so.
But we can, we can plan land uses accordingly, knowing that on a rail corridor, you might have a train derailment that spills hazardous materials, and you really need to think about that in your land use planning when you, you know, if you want to shove an apartment complex next to this railroad corridor, think twice about it because you might have an issue.
Just said in the thing that we saw earlier that we're trying to build multi-story buildings on that intersection, so.
So it's just something you have to keep in, so they have, so luckily, our particular right away for the rail that we have in Mooresville has 100 feet on each side, so it's unusual, it's extra, extra-large. Places like downtown Raleigh where the train goes right through Glenwood South District, right by apartments, that's something they would have to look at. But, you know, things like that weren't considered when they built older cities.
One other thing that I didn't notice was things like water pollution. So where does that fall in?
So that's, so pollution is, yeah, was not included because...
But, but I'm not just talking about natural pollution. I'm talking about man-made pollution, like what, what happened with the Duke spill, right? Or somebody goes and does something in the lake.
Yeah.
What, how do you deal with those?
So I'm, and this is more of an assumption because we didn't really get into the pollution, but it was more disaster, or hazards that they, that they feel are more like local, hyper-localized, like a pipe burst and it's spilling, you know, materials, like, so we, hazardous materials spill, but that, they're envisioning more of like a cloud of poisonous gases, you know, floating around town and drifting into other jurisdictions, you know, how do we respond to that? You could make a justification for that, it's just, in the amount of resources that we have, we could, we could only cover so many, and the probability, the higher probability ones are the ones we focused on, per FEMA standards.
Are we ready to consider a motion? Again, we have a cheat sheet, which is very handy.
Yeah, this will be an easy one. Really easy.
I make an, I make a motion to approve the county hazard mitigation plan.
So to recommend adoption of the plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion is carried. Thank you, Brad, and we gave you an A+, by the way.
Thanks.
Moving on to item 10A.
Good evening. The item before you today, it's an administrative request for a major site plan for a development known as Alta-Mooresville. I'll do a brief staff presentation. We also have the developer here this evening and their team, and they are available for any questions that you might have after I go through some of the basics. So this development should look a little familiar to some of you. This came before you... This came before you last year as a conditional rezoning. It's a 250-unit multifamily development. It's near the intersection of Mooresville Carpenter Road and Davis Drive. It also includes some live-work space as well as co-working office space, in addition to the regular apartment units. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. It is conditional neighborhood activity center because it was approved, the conditional rezoning. So here you have the zoning map. The property in the middle there is zoned, the conditional neighborhood activity center. We have neighborhood activity center up to the north and east as well, with mostly retail shopping center. We also have a low-density residential, single-family home to the east of the property. To the south and west, the property is bordered by the town of Cary. We have single-family homes to the west in an existing subdivision, as well as some vacant property to the south. This is just some basic parcel information. The property will be just over nineteen and a half acres after the right-of-way dedication. It's obviously in the town corporate limits, and this is just some basic information. As far as the dimensional standards, this property meets all of the zoning requirements for setbacks, building height. It's well under the maximum lot coverage, it's proposed at thirty-three percent, one sixty-five percent is permitted. They go above and beyond the required tree preservation area, and also they are providing more parking spaces than the UDO requires. So as I mentioned before, this was a conditional rezoning that was approved earlier this year in February. The ordinance approving that rezoning was included in your packet, attachment three, I believe. That ordinance had twenty conditions, so quite a few conditions that were attached to that rezoning, all of which are met by the design of the site plan or through the approval process of the major site plan. So I wanted to go into detail, not all twenty, but just a few of the major conditions that were placed on the property. So there was a requirement for the inclusion of live-work units that faced Mooresville Carpenter Road. The developer is proposing fourteen units with over fifteen thousand square feet of that. Have a little bit more information on that, on that later. There's also, was a requirement to have at least two thousand square feet of commercial or office space. They are meeting that by having a co-working offi- office space. There's also a children's play area included, there's cross-access to the adjacent parcels, specifically the construction of a driveway through the CVS property, which you'll see on the site plan in just a minute. There's payment and lieu required for some intersection improvements, designated tree save area. The ordinance limited the building height and the number of units, which they have met. There are also some enhanced landscape buffers that were a requirement of the rezoning, and as well as twenty workforce housing units as part of the affordable aspect of the development. So on the screen, you'll see a, a site plan of the proposed development. The main building there, Building E, as it's labeled, has the majority of the units, as well as most of the amenities in the co-working space. There's also Building A, which also fronts a smaller building, about thirty units, fronting on Mooresville Carpenter Road. There are also two buildings closer to the western property line, and those are townhouse style. There's going to be ten total units on that, like, townhouse style. You'll see that there are two accesses off of Mooresville Carpenter Road, one full access and one right-in, right-out. And then you'll see the cross-access improvement through the CVS property right here, which will lead to access off of Davis Drive as well. See, much of the site is preserved as tree preservation, there's existing wetlands. That's the southern por- portion of the property. Eight and a half acres. And then I wanted to point out that there's also this greenway here that developer is proposing. It is technically off-site, it's in the town of Cary, but it's running along the southern property of the development. This just shows you the landscaping and tree save area. All of the landscaping of the development meets UDO standards. There's also some enhanced buffers along the western property line where the single-family residential neighborhood for Town of Cary is, and an enhanced buffer along eastern property where that low-density residential single-family home is. And then I just wanted to show, the hatched area is all the tree save area on the right-hand side. Just to give you a better visualization of that. All the other landscaping as far as the street yard buffers around the parking lots, foundation plantings, all of that meet UDO. This is an elevation of Building A, this is the smaller building facing Mooresville Carpenter Road. You'll see on the first floor, you have some of the live-work units. Here is just a snapshot of what the floor plans for those live-work units look like. They're, they're different from the other units because they have direct access from, direct public access, so for clients or whoever to come into those spaces. There's also some enhanced technology in these, these units, some more outlets and internet connections, things like that, that differ them from the other units in the development. This is the larger building. On the top, you'll see the, the colored rendering is what it will look like along Mooresville Carpenter Road. Also have the live-work units there. And then the image below is the, the longer side of the building, which will be behind the CBS and the Luder property. You'll see there was also a condition, which I didn't mention before, there are no balconies that overlook the, the single-family low-density residential property. And so you'll see that the southwestern corner doesn't have any balconies, and that was part of the rezoning conditions. The co-working space is located in Building E. This satisfies the requirement for their commercial or, or office space, it's over two thousand square feet. And this elevation is one of the two townhouse-style units, and there are ten total units.
So that's one of the little ones over, that overlooked, like, the closest to the houses?
Yes, closer to the single-family homes on the western property. And that bottom is the rear elevation, and the top is what it would look like from the front. Just a little bit of information about the traffic impact, transportation impact. As part of the conditional rezoning, the developer had to do a TIA. And that, at that time, they were proposing two hundred and nine, two hundred and ninety units. That has since dropped to two hundred and fifty units. So those trips, those average trips, daily trips, would be reduced from that. Staff believes it'd be somewhere around just over fourteen hundred trips, daily trips, instead of that closer to two thousand trips. And there are also several pretty large improvements that the developer is doing to nearby roads. Mooresville Carpenter Road's not only getting the right-of-way dedication, but they also are widening the road for an additional lane, and will be paying into a payment and lieu for a planted median that will be built in the future. There's some payment and lieu that will need to be collected for some intersection improvements for not only Mooresville Carpenter and Davis Drive, but also Davis Drive and Mooresville Parkway. And then, like I previously mentioned, the greenway along the southern property line, it's about point-two miles, will eventually connect to the Crabtree Hatcher Creek Greenway, and will also include a mid-block crossing on Davis Drive. This property, this development, will also require a parkland payment and lieu similar to other developments. We require that it's two thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars per unit. So that will need to be paid prior to building permit. And then also for school impact, there are no UDO requirements on school impact, so this is just informational. Mooresville has a calculators that's specific to Mooresville that tries to anticipate how many students would come out of a development. The calculator estimates ninety students, this is a bit high realistically. But the calculator looks at the density and the size of the property, and doesn't really take into consideration what type of, whether it's single-family or apartment. So it's a little bit high, but that is what our calculator does say. So because this site plan, this major site plan, is consistent, it meets all of our requirements in the UDO and the EDCM, and it also meets all of the conditions that have been placed on it with the conditional rezoning. Staff is recommending approval. We do have three conditions that we recommend. One is just, again, reiterating that it will meet all of the conditions for, from the previous ordinance for the rezoning. The second is for a PIL for a planted median along Mooresville Carpenter Road, and then the third is for the parkland payment and lieu. On the screen, you have the resolution for action, but here to answer any questions, and the developer and their team is also here. So I can pull up the site plan, and if you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you, Natalie. Start down this end. Kenneth, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
The traffic assessment, was that based on the number of units, or did that take into consideration the co-work, live-work spaces as well, that would, people would be coming back and forth to visit those particular units?
I'm not positive, um, you know.
Yeah, so the one, the one that was proposed in the, that Natalie included in the slideshow that was on the rezoning, included, I believe, five thousand square feet of office, which probably, I would say, from my, my opinion, would generates, overcompensates the live-work component, and, oh, an additional, about thirty or so additional units. So it included both office and regular apartment units.
The estimated number of trips is taken to account, not only the people who'd live there, but then clients in and out, okay?
Yes.
The other component note, we talked about the access to Davis Drive, and you mentioned that there was a CVS cut-through. Is that a cut-through the parking lot? Can you describe that, how that is actually happening?
Sure, so you'll see it here, and I apologize if you can't see it too well. This will be a driveway connection that will be through, I believe it's through the parking lot, and that will be constructed as part of this project. So it's, it shouldn't, yeah, it's not a main access point to the development, those two are on Mooresville Carpenter Road, but people will be able to leave or come in that way.
So realistically, is that a usable access, or is that going to create any hazards with, you know, folks within the CVS park? Imagine you're going to the, to the CVS, and you got people in and out to the, to the main building, there's, with a number of folks there, what's the, the concern? Is that actually a usable access, or is all the traffic going to funnel through, you know, two exits on a pretty crowded road?
I mean, the, that intersection's a right-in, right-out on Davis, so, and there, that is built to be pretty much the CVS's exit onto Davis. I mean, I would, the, the main entrance, cool, is going to be on, on Mooresville Carpenter, because that's where you have the full access.
Look, there's no parking on that section there. I mean, I don't know if you can bring it up, Matt, there, but, I mean, I think it was designed originally to be a connection there, but there, it's only like a sort of loading and dumpster area there, so, I mean, all the parking is on the top and the other backside of the.
So it shouldn't cause any.
If you're connecting in and right here, you know, I think that, again, that was the sort of idea, but I don't know if you can.
And there are plans for signage and striping in that area as well, because it, it looks like you have an image in front of you, but it's kind of where, on the pharmacy drive-thru wraps around, so there is some plans for additional safety there.
You can't quite read on this, right? There's still like a future road connection into the Luder property, right? You've mentioned that.
There is, so you'll see, apology if it's hard to see. It's a stub, it's a stub here, and so if this property ever does redevelop, we do have a payment and lieu for this connection. And then there's obviously this stub here, so it would be ready to connect.
There was some, I guess, back and forth with the CVS owners to make that happen. Is there any progress on that, because it's been quite a while now? Is there a time estimation for when this would occur?
I believe it's going to happen while the, while this is being constructed, so all of those issues with CVS or the communication was resolved.
I don't think I have any more, that's answered pretty well.
The only question I had was around the signage of these co-, you know, the work, live.
The live-working spaces, sure.
I mean, yes, we talked about having multiple signages, but how would that work?
I wouldn't anticipate those spaces having signage, and I think the developer, if they have another idea about that. But these, these are some of the live-work spaces, I wouldn't anticipate signage there. What you saw here, there's some signage, and that would probably be for the leasing office and the co-working space. But those individual units wouldn't have signs.
Sure.
I mean, maybe something on a, a window or something, I think, I don't know.
We'll invite the developer to comment.
Any thoughts on that?
My name's Kaitlin Shelby, I'm Managing Director with Wood Partners and the developer for this project. So with respect to signage, where we would anticipate if, if that was desired by our live-work tenants is you could actually put it, subject to able, being able to pull a sign permit on the actual glazing, would be kind of window signage. We haven't necessarily put a band out on the elevation, that way, if people don't use it, it doesn't look like it's empty. And we do have a recorded easement with CVS for that cross-access, that's been fully worked out and recorded to allow us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just any questions?
Just on this presentation or overall, can I ask questions? I'll try not to ask too many, but I do have questions. The office space, I don't understand, is that a resident amenity, or is that something like a, a WeWork, we're going to rent out? Because I see it, yeah, not really dedicated parking to it, so that was a lot of office space, but not a lot of parking.
Yeah, so it's, it's the latter, so it will be open to the public, and people can rent offices by the month. It's very similar, not to draw a connection to WeWork, given everything going on with WeWork at the moment, but.
Regus. They're a real company, don't they?
It's purely or for years.
So, right, as, in a, in a micro-scale, essentially, so it is open to the public. Certainly, the, during the workday, the vast majority of our residents will be, with the exception of our fourteen live-work units, and then we've got our two thousand square feet of office space, the vast majority of our other residents will be at work. So it will create synergies from a parking standpoint. And then we, we do have parking above and beyond what is required by the Town of Mooresville UDO as well, so.
This is in Building E, the same as the live-work units, correct?
Correct.
And then the live work, I'm confused what those are too, they look like a two-bedroom, two-bath, because there's two bathrooms in it, and it has one parking space and all this square footage, so, yeah, I want to live there. But what, what are those, and why were those dedicated, one parking space, as well as this given one parking space? So I see parking on two blocks away, but then I see these nice areas that don't have parking.
So they weren't actually dedicated any specific part, one, one parking space per unit. Generally speaking, across the entire project, we're at about one point five parking spaces per unit. So there's no actually dedicated parking as part of our, our site plan. So everybody's essentially free to park anywhere that they would like, anywhere on-site. The, the live-work units are especially different in that they have direct access. Anybody can walk up to your front door, instead of having to go into the main leasing office and to essentially, you know, work through your typical residential hallway. And so if you have a client coming in, they can, they can come directly to your front door. And then we've also situated, all of them, they have, particularly in Building E, have more glazing, so they have more glass on the ground floor as well. And then with that direct access, that walks, that opens up into, not a bedroom, but into the workspace. And the, the concept of it is, for really people who would otherwise be working from home, this is a, a more conducive way to do that, where you can actually have clients or customers come to your, your, your place of live and work, so to speak. Many of them may then walk over to our co-working space and rent out that conference room, for example, if they happen to host a larger meeting. So that the two uses really work quite well together. But from a parking standpoint, the office users and the live-work users and the residents can all park essentially wherever they'd like to throughout the entire development. And again, we are over-parked above and beyond what the UDO requires.
That's okay, I, I understand that. I used on drawing C3O, and so I liked how you broke down the parking based on the units. I used on drawing C-30, and so I liked how you broke down the parking based on the units, because then it made sense, because you were actually dedicating a parking space to a unit, saying two bedrooms has two parking spaces or 1.5, and the parking didn't seem to make sense when you looked at it that way, how people live and the number of people in bedrooms. My other question is, I'm stuck on this parking. I looked at your fire truck drawing, C-2.4, and this top corner, can you go to the main layout, the corner of Building E? I know the fire truck fits. It's in the presentation.
Oh, it's in the presentation?
Yeah, you can do, there's one, there's a detailed one, but just on the presentation so everybody can see.
Just on the site plan?
Yes. Up in the top, in the top corner of Board, Building E, and I think that's Building D. The way this is set up, since you don't have any interior parking, the only way the fire trucks can come in is go around the ring, the whole circle. And on the north side, I guess it's really the east side, it's compact cars only. So although the drawing shows that a fire truck fits, if you have 250 units, the likelihood that there's a moving truck there, retail or somebody else has some other trucks, sanitation is there, landscapers are there, you could gridlock all of these trucks, the cars and the fire truck in there. So I just wondered, did you look at, from a city standpoint, really looking at moving trucks? Because with that many people, almost every day a moving truck could potentially be there, and there is no parking for trucks. So they're going to block the street, they're going to block everything. Having trucks there is going to be very difficult.
So I'll let Caitlin maybe answer some of the moving trucks.
Yeah, that's a fair question. So certainly while we are in lease-up mode, we'll have more moving trucks than when we are fully leased up. This property, once fully leased up, should generally stay around 90, between 93 and 95% occupied at all times. All that said, you know, it is upon us to make sure that we manage and police moving trucks, as, and it's, it becomes a very full-time job for on-site staff to make sure that what you're describing doesn't happen, to make sure that we're not blocking access for other residents getting in and out of the property, and certainly for emergency vehicles. So Wood Partners, we do self-manage our properties as well. We have, we will have likely one, up to potentially four people on staff during lease-up, and then multiple maintenance folks as well. So we will have potentially up to five people at any given time, staff members on property that help us, you know, police and manage that. And of course, you know, I know we've definitely gone through the calculations to make sure that we meet the UDO from a fire life safety standpoint, and a safe access from a fire truck. That's obviously of utmost importance to us. We'd never want to put ourselves or our residents in a position where we couldn't make, ensure their safety. But it is certainly something that we will have to actively manage, particularly during that initial lease-up.
And also on the southeast corner, so I'm still on this parking stuff, do I understand this correctly, to empty your garbage, you have to walk three blocks, or do you have trash chutes in these buildings?
That's a great question, too. So we actually provide valet trash to our residents. And so what that means is, we actually have a company that you just have to put your trash outside your door at certain nights of the week, and they come by and they pick that up for you and take it to the dumpster.
And then that's down near the dog park.
Correct.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
And then your park, just so everybody here notices, your park from your drawing has one swing, one slide, and one table with an umbrella. So just so, I understand that's what we're calling a play area, and that's, really you couldn't put two tables, so that's acceptable, that's a bare minimum requirement.
I mean, we have not, certainly, we typically, we infill all of our amenity space with quite a bit of furniture when it's all said and done, so I can't promise that's the final furniture layout.
It was a cute one, though, it was a tree.
Tree, it was, I do love that swing. You know, we actually don't expect that we will have many children. We don't find that we have many children at our apartment projects, and, but that's certainly something, if for some reason we're seeing it get quite a bit of use, that's a fairly easy thing to supplement with furniture down the road, if that's the case.
You can walk right to Morrisville Community Park.
There's a lot of people there.
We do love our tree swing.
And then the dog park that's next to it, I couldn't tell the size of it, but with that many units, you probably have over 150 dogs in this community. And I just, I know it's astroturf, your drainage, are you draining through gravel into the ground and then sudsing the astroturf, or is that going into some other system?
So I can, from an aesthetic standpoint, it'll be a combination of astroturf and mulch. I would have to have our civil engineer talk through the drainage piece of it, because I'm not the expert on that. Dave, you want to come up and answer that? Dave's with Withers, Ravinell. Can't quite answer the dog park drainage.
Good evening, my name's Dave Barton, I'm with Withers and Ravinell. Regarding the dog park drainage, it would flow either through and into the grade underneath, or it would come across the surface, onto the grass, and then go into catch basins or natural features that would collect that. So it's, if it were all mulch, it would be treated the exact same way, but this gives it an opportunity to infiltrate in through the artificial turf.
Well, I like artificial turf, but a lot of people are soaping it, and then when they do that, then you have a completely different problem. So you have a high volume of dogs. These people have a lot of dogs around here. So, and I looked up national averages, 67% of people on average will have pets. In this area, it might be 80, and they might have two of them. And then twice a day, before work and after work, you bring all these animals down into this little area, and somebody takes the hose and you have a real mess out of it. And so I was just curious how much thought you put into that park, as well as the entire area, because you have an 8 by 1,000 square foot runway on the west border, which I can guess is going to turn into a dog park on its own. So the design of the dog park, you're thinking, that's all-natural. All these dogs are just going to go in this little pen, do their business, and it's, that's it.
Well, of course, the residents would be responsible for picking up the solid waste, as any responsible neighbor or resident would be. As far as the liquids, it would be, I don't know how to explain that even better. I don't see chemicals or detergents being used, that would be harmful to the environment. There is going to be a water spigot nearby, so that there could be a hose, if somebody wanted to hose something off if they needed to. Maybe also staff could look over that as well. If there's an issue, they could come down and clean it up, but I think it would be important not to use chemicals in that area.
Because I know that a lot of communities in high-rises, they have drainage systems under these pets. So your swimming pool also doesn't go into sanitary, how does that drain? Are you planning to drain that every year, or is that a one-time fill and then put a cover over it?
So we don't believe, to be perfectly honest, I'm not entirely sure that we fully drain their saltwater pools, and they're obviously maintained year-round. In terms of whether or not we drain them once a year, I don't honestly know that off the top of my head, but obviously we'll have to comply with all the Health Department code with respect to the pool, and we pull separate permits related to that. That's an entirely separate permitting process that we have to comply with, with the Health Department.
And you don't know how that is, because I saw some kind of disclaimer that we do not with big bold letters, which just caught my eye of. How would you drain it if you're definitely not going into a regular sewage system? How would you get the water out of the pool if you needed to? Let's say you needed to do a repair at the bottom of the pool, or you want to cement over it.
You might, we might have to vacuum it out, I'm not entirely sure, off the top of my head, but...
Typically, there is a drain.
Yeah. And I'm not sure what that specific note on the plans, I'm assuming that was probably a code-specific note that we had to have on it.
It was on drawing 6.0C, pool drainage and utility. That's all right, wasn't important, but I don't...
C-6.0, I'm just interested, because, I mean, pools typically do have a drain plug.
Drain somewhere, yeah.
It may not be drained on a regular basis, and that may be what they're getting at, but like, on a maintenance, if you had to do something like in our pool in Savannah, I mean, we had to do some major work and I had to drain the whole pool. So I mean, there should be some sort of a drain plug.
Yeah. See, I'm going to go back and ask, I'm not entirely sure. It's a good question. Haven't been asked that before.
I believe there is a drain that goes into the sanitary system. However, that would all be part of the permitting process to see if that would be the actual use of it, or if it needs to be drained by a different method.
All right, but it's not going out into the wetlands, we're not going to...
No, ma'am, absolutely not.
Can you capture that? All right, I think, and then the other was around the affordable housing. I'm assuming we leave that in, that's in the ordinance, so even though we've discussed affordable housing programs...
That's a separate thing.
...apply with this.
They have to comply.
Okay.
One of the conditions that the African policy in order to get this through the council...
I didn't know if it needed modified, or some different terminology. The way, the way it was drafted from the city council standpoint, because it's tied to 15 years of HUD versus maybe some other uses of those 20 units, but as long as everybody's fine with, it was on page.
This is actually a specific instance where they're actually going to provide it, whereas what we've got so far with the council is like the Declaration of Independence, not the...
Okay, but this will count towards that, these 20 units is...
Yeah, how does that actually work? So if 20 units are dedicated to that purpose, and then through the planning process, that doesn't happen, or it happens in a different way, is there some adjustment to that? Does that then, you know, those units go away and they can rent as-is, or...
I can only speculate that, just like any other change to planning, there would be existing situations which would be grandfathered and preserved, I would think.
I think what perhaps you are getting to is, how does the town enforce that they are actually doing the 20...
Well, not only...
That's defined, so on Number 20, I think it defined that how it was going to set up and be reported, but it wasn't necessarily the affordable housing types that the city council was looking at. So this is affordable housing, but it wasn't necessarily some of the direction from what the consultant had provided.
Yeah.
And I don't know the flex, it doesn't sound like it's flexible to necessarily change.
Okay, I was just curious.
Because it was a condition of the rezoning, the only way to change the condition would be to go back through that rezoning process again. So that condition does need to be abided by, and as you indicated, there is a yearly reporting that goes along with that. If there was an issue, we would deal with it through enforcement like we would any other condition.
That's all my questions.
I've got a really small one. When does the mid-block crossing sidewalk go?
The mid-block crossing, and you're referring to the Greenway along Davis Drive? Are you asking where it is, or...
I know where it should be, when would it be?
When would it be? I'm not sure when it would be constructed.
You've tied certain other things to, you know, the first occupancy permit, so...
It's, it needs to be completed, the Greenway needs to be completed as part of the project, so it would need to be complete before planning would sign off on the certificate occupancy.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we've seen this project go through some interesting iterations. Is anybody brave enough to make a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion.
Actually, I've got a few questions, I'm sorry. I know you mentioned the access, one will be full access, and the other, I think you said it was going to be right-in, right-out. Which is which, which is where?
Let's see. So it looks like the full access is further down here, and we've got a right-in, right-out right here.
And the full access ties into Bethany Village Shopping Center, ties into the shopping center.
I think my other question might be for Taylor. I assume your company has done these type of developments elsewhere?
Yes, so we have been developing the Triangle area for 20 years, and we also are a national company, we've got 18 offices throughout the United States. And so we've, I'm proud to say, we've got a long track record. Our most recent project in Morrisville would have been the Bristol.
And they've all gotten to full occupancy?
Thankfully, we've been fortunate to have quite a bit of success. Obviously, the demand in this region is incredibly high, and so, as I'm sure you all know, the great apartment growth has been happening in and around here, but we expect that this will be leased up very, very quickly.
What do you expect the prices of the units to be?
You know, we haven't set, we haven't set that price point. We do anticipate it's going to be very comparable to other Class A apartments in and around the town. So other, you know, projects to maybe point to that might be comparable would be the Aster in Cary, or District Station in Park West Village, for example. Just kind of give you a general sense.
Anything else?
The only comment I would have is, we have got quite a few nonprofit organizations that operate within the town. They are always looking for some space to do some activities.
Yeah.
And so I would encourage Wood Properties to think about a financial plan that, you know, encourages, or at least supports, these nonprofit organizations in having a reasonable-priced space, preferably free, but at least, you know, at least keep that consideration to the town.
Yeah, absolutely. We view it to be a great benefit, you know, a money and benefit to the entire town, and hope and expect it to be relatively affordable for everybody.
And have you done one of these co-working spaces before?
We have, yes, not directly here in the Triangle, but we have in other parts of the United States, and they've been very, very well-received.
All right.
Yeah?
Could you please go with that? Don't touch the chicken.
There you go.
Yeah, this is amazing.
I move the motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2019-253-0, approving a major site plan for Elta Morrisville to be located near the southwest corner of Morrisville Carpenter Road and Davis Drive.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. So that's passed three to two.
Three to two.
Would you like to make a comment as to why you felt you were... You don't have to, just something that we can include.
I was really torn, actually, between yea or nay. I like the concept of, you know, the work-live, you know, concept, I just think it's just going to create more congestion. I mean, I'm pro-growth, but it just looks like too much.
Yeah, I echo that, I think the concern primarily stems from the not having a direct access at Davis Drive, but then also, I actually work in a co-work space, and it generates a lot more traffic than the housing units, and that is a concern for me.
Thank you for that. So we have the motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Shelby and Mr. Barton, and your team for coming tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. So I have the easy thing.
You're on the agenda.
End of them, Marty, that's good.
Right.
Yes, never speak too soon, you know.
I'm going to get out of everything you all have opened up. Thank you. I got so many things open. Thank you. So I'm going to get back to that. Okay. The UDO requires that each year, we, the planning board, establish a schedule for their meetings, so we have to set up a specific day, you know, day of each month. And I have reviewed, let's see if I can open it, I'm sorry. So I've gone through holidays and looked at the schedule for the second Thursday of every month at 6:30. So this is what I'm presenting to you. We need to submit this to the town clerk before the end of the year. All these dates are going to be published on the website, since these are public meetings. So that's, if you have any little questions about the dates, I'm here.
Can I ask, July 9th is good for everybody, that's 4th of July week, so if anybody has hard travel, bring it up now.
Well, they're always going to be...
That's why we got alternates.
...go on vacation, or...
That's me.
So...
Well, it's a Saturday, so honestly, some people are going to be going ahead, some will be going, I mean, it's going to be a weird one, actually, but...
Go on vacation, or.
That's me.
So.
Well, it's, it's a Saturday, so honestly, some people are gonna be gone ahead, some will be gone, I mean, it's gonna be a weird one, actually, but.
Yeah, 12th of November might be a tough date, but.
We occasionally have changed a meeting, you know. More years, like we did for this last meeting, which is in October, because of planning conferences and so on, that, that has changed outside of the official schedule.
That was my official notice from the alternate, I may not be here.
Well, I mean, I think if, again, if, if it's, Fourth of July is Saturday, I mean, going to the week before that is gonna be problematic, because some people will be gone that weekend, and I mean, I guess you could go the week after, but. Yeah.
It's fine.
So leave it as is then? So I guess we need an official motion to officially approve our schedule.
I will move that we approve the schedule as presented to us.
I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Marty. That's approved.
All right, so the next item. By the, in December, we need to submit to town council as required, and this is another requirement of the UDO. But you are required to nominate a chairman and a vice chairman, and then that recommendation goes to town council, and they approve, you know, they will agree to approve or not who, who you all have left. So I'm going to hand out a little ballot for first to be chair, and everyone can vote on this.
Will I get to vote?
You're just gonna throw it away.
I can check with the town clerk, as you said, all members can vote.
All right, I'm happy to continue if you'd like me to, but I'm also quite happy to disturb to anybody else who wants to take the job.
My census pen didn't work, is that, is that?
All right, Peter Pritchard is re-elect, re-nominated. And now we do the.
And I too will be happy to continue to not do anything if this people.
He, he knows me occasionally.
Thank you. Can we vote for more than one?
These microphones are very sensitive, yeah.
So what does the push button do? Is that muted? Like if I was to cough, I mean, what would, just go over there, I mean? Okay. Yeah, well, but at least it would be as.
Lee Langston, you were nominated for vice chair. We will send these recommendations to town council, and I believe it's gonna be on their agenda in December.
Thank you, Marty. So we'll move to staff comments.
All right, so just to touch on a few things in the newsletter. We did get a couple of new applications in over the past month. One is for the school's village development. I think that name is probably a little misleading. It's actually a small shopping center proposed on Davis Drive. Also have a rezoning application in for the property at the corner of Holly Creek and Davis Drive. And we did have one site plan approved, and that was for the former Sam's Club property that is being converted into an office. And then the public transportation study was adopted by the town council. In other news, the Affordable Housing Plan also went before the town council in October, and they did adopt that plan at their last meeting here this past Tuesday night. And staff has also done some census outreach recently at the trunk-or-treat event. So that's just kind of an overview of some of the items in the planning newsletter. I did also want to give you a little bit of heads up about what is coming on your next agenda. There is a special use application, because it is a special use application, that is all I will say. But as a reminder, when you do get that packet, there are some strict state statute requirements about ex parte communication. We will put a reminder of the special use procedures in that packet as well. And then with the land use plan, the consultants are gonna be back, and we'll have a work session for you on that as well. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Michelle.
So board comments.
Start with Chris.
I'm going to, Lee.
I'm only gonna kinda, is there any way that you can send us, or maybe I can, I guess I could download it separately, just the agenda? Because, I mean, when we get like 650 pages, I mean, even with like a pretty good computer, it shows. Like right now, I accidentally backed out of it, and I couldn't get it back.
You can open it from the website, it does have the agenda and the package.
So I can separately go there and do it. It's like, I mean, I just couldn't even, it never would load again, like even, you know, just.
But, so the other option would be just go to the town website, and where that posts all the agendas and meeting packets. You can just open that.
Just one caution on that, I think it's only happened one time in the last couple of years. But if you do have any attorney-client privileged information, any confidential material attached to your packet, you will only see that if you open it up on the link that is provided to you by Ms. Saunders. So you do take the risk that there's gonna be something that is kind of confidential for your eyes, only that you'll miss, that is going to be very rare.
Well, I mean, I can do that.
Only once every couple of years.
It's just more like when I'm in here, if I was trying to look at something else, like if you, if I actually get out of it, like I just wasn't even able to get back to what I was trying to look at on that plan, because it was just such a large document. So yeah, I can go at home and, and take more time.
Wow. So items 13 and 14, I assume that both of you have reapplied, or you've got your name in the system?
I have.
That's good. So come to item 15. Who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.